Okay, I have 6:30. Welcome, everybody, to the Federal Way City Council meeting for May 19th of 2020. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi, everybody. Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting. Our council member Linda Coachmar is unable to join us. She had a family member come up and she could not. So her absence today is excused. So let's go ahead and move on to the presentations. We are, the first one is under 3A, the South King County Housing and Homelessness Partners, SKHHP update. First, we'll have a staff introduction from Brian Davis, Community Development Director, and then we'll get into, well, I'll turn it over to Brian. Brian?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council President Honda and members of the council. The city is fortunate enough to be a part of a coalition entitled the South King Homelessness and Housing Partnership, which we entered into last year. At the beginning of this year, after months of search, we were fortunate to hire an executive director, and that is Angela San Filippo, and she is here to introduce not only herself, but the, a brief overview of the work plan and some of the budget issues of Skip, what we call. So I will turn it over to Angela. She is joining us by phone, and we will be having the PowerPoint slides changed by staff. So, Thomas, I'm assuming that we can bring her in by phone. She's not on already.
She should be able to talk.
All right, Angela, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, we can. Thank you so much for joining us.
Great, yeah. Thank you for having me. Thanks for the opportunity, Mayor and council members. I really appreciate being able to be here. I do have a presentation that I'll walk through. If Thomas or Stephanie can bring that up, that would be great. And as Brian said, I'm going to provide a brief update on Skip. I think all of you are probably very familiar with it, but I wanted to provide just a little bit of background as well and discuss some of the actions that Skip is focusing on in 2020 as well as 2021, and then end with a brief overview of the proposed contributions for the partner jurisdictions in the upcoming years. So next slide, please. Skip is the result of many years of collaboration and effort by South King County cities, elected officials, and housing advocacy groups. Over 10 years of collaboration to get this regional partnership in place for the purpose of increasing the available options for South King County community members to access affordable housing and preserve the existing affordable housing stock that is already in the area. Next slide. The key priorities to help Skip achieve this that are reflected in the work plan are providing a unified voice for South King County, as well as developing shared solutions for what are really regional housing needs, and keeping our neighbors and community members in the region and in their homes, and serving really the most vulnerable residents and populations that live in South King County. Next slide. This is an overview of the 2019 milestones. As Brian said, the inter-local agreement became effective in January, very first part of the year, but it took several months of work into the beginning of 2019 for all partner jurisdictions to approve and sign the inter-local agreement. And about midway through the year, the city of Auburn took on the administrative duties, and that really filled an important role for the ensuing hiring process, budget development, and other tasks. In July, the Skip Executive Board, which is made up of representation of each of the Skip partners, agreed on action items that would inform Skip's first work plan when staff was hired, and I'll get into a little bit more of the details of the work plan in a minute. In October, six of the nine Skip Partner Cities came together to jointly work on a subregional housing needs and policy assessment through grants made available by House Bill 1923. Skip committed to becoming the fiscal agent for that work, helping to really solidify the partnership between those six cities and enable the subregional assessment to move forward. Throughout the second half of 2019, Skip Partners advocated jurisdictions to enable legislation that took advantage of sales tax credit made available by another piece of legislation passed in 2019 under House Bill 1406. In November, the Skip Executive Board passed a resolution that encouraged partners to pool those sales tax credit funds to establish a regional housing capital fund for South King County and bring a local revenue source for affordable housing to the region. You'll see that throughout 2019, the Skip Executive Board, as well as the Skip Staff Work Group, met monthly and really were the driving force between getting these things done in 2019. Next slide. This is an overview of the timeline for adoption of the 2020 and 2021 work plan, as well as approving the 2021 budget and projections for the 2022 budget. Currently, we're in the process of presenting and reviewing the work plan with Skip Partners before the board formally adopts in the summer, which will then be followed by individual jurisdiction in late summer and early fall. But this is really an opportunity to inform that formal adoption process and ask any questions or have any discussion about the work plan itself. Next slide. This is the beginning of the work plan. It's split into three work areas, the first one being governance and administration. This covers program-wide management activities, startup procedures, the development of the budget and the work plan, as well as establishing an advisory committee that will inform the board's decisions moving forward. Outcomes of this particular area of the work plan are clear measures of progress and success that we'll use to measure how we're implementing that work plan and will inform future work plan processes as well. And secondly, equitable outcomes across the region, and this really ties back to the advisory committee and bringing the necessary voices into the decision-making process. Next slide. The second area of work is around policy and planning. The first part of this is advocating for and developing an administration program for a housing capital fund. We talked a little bit about the beginnings of that with pooling of the House Bill 1406 funds. It also includes inventorying subsidized and naturally occurring affordable housing that's vulnerable to market pressures. This will help to inform priorities for any preservation of affordable housing in the region, and then also collaborating across jurisdictions on programs and policies that help to further affordable housing strategies. Some of the outcomes here are increased resources that are dedicated to affordable housing in South King County, as well as the increased number of cities with housing action plans that implement strategies to preserve and create affordable housing. And next slide, please. The third and final work area in the plan is around outreach and education. This includes representing South King County at local and regional decision tables, meetings, and forums, furthering understanding of stakeholder groups, as well as elected officials around the housing needs and the range of opportunities in the area, and developing advocacy priorities for our stakeholders, as well as staff and our Skip Executive Board to use in legislative processes. Some of the outcomes here are around South King County being heard, considered, and supported, and this is really about that unified voice, seeing changes happen in policies, practices and funding streams that directly relate to South King County, and then increased interest in nonprofit and for-profit development of housing in South King County is another outcome. So lastly, next slide, please. I wanted to take an opportunity also to provide an overview of the proposed contributions for Skip Partners for 2021 as well as 2022. The Executive Board, the Staff Work Group, and myself have developed a proposal that will enable us to take advantage of some personnel cost savings that we saw in 2019 and 2020 that will enable the current jurisdiction contributions to remain the same through the year 2022, as well as enable us to hire a second position of Skip Program Coordinator that will help to further the work and achieve the goals outlined in the work plan. That will likely be a part-time or three-quarter time position based on the current revenue contributions and keeping those stable. You'll see that they are outlined there in the table, and they're based on population, grouped by population for the Skip Partner Cities. With that, I did want to have a little bit of time for questions. I'll just end with saying that the economic impacts and job losses of the coronavirus pandemic and the need for housing for all families is even more critical issue at this time. Some of the long-term policy changes, as well as establishing local funding sources and the coordination and collaboration that I went over as part of Skip's overall mission and work plan are more crucial than ever to help us address affordable housing in South King County. I think the last slide has my contact information on it, just to make sure that you all have it, but I will just open it up to any questions that you might have.
All right, council, any questions? Let's see here. Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation and congratulations on your role. So the population that you're going to use for the budget, are you going to be waiting for the new population, you know, to come up from Census 2020, or are we using the existing population count for each city?
I used the existing population count. So the most current one that we have available was a 2020, but it does remain in the same population. You'll see the populations are grouped together, so you remain in that same group population number regardless of the population projection that we use. You're in that 65,000 to 100,000 range and remains so with the 2020 projections as well.
For 2021, 2022?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, council, any more, any more questions? Okay. Hearing, thank you, Angela, for your work. Great job.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me.
All right. Take care. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to Mayor's Emerging Issues Report. First, we'll have a financial update from Ade, our Finance Director. Ade?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Okay. My God. Okay. Thank you. The information on this May 19 report is probably going to be a little bit similar to what we did two weeks ago. I think the major changes will be in the next report because that is when we will have the sales tax from the month of March, a little bit of a modification based on some of the things that we know about the Performing Heart Center, the changes that Mayor made, the impact based on what we paid for the month of April are reflected in this, but the major information probably will come at the next report. So we're going to do an update on Dumont Center, Federal Way Community Center, and Performing Heart Center, and look at the impact of all the three on the city. For Dumont, based on some of the changes that we've made and with the closure, the January through March probably are the same information that you had two weeks ago. April, that is revenue that we had last year, about 53,000, and for this year, because of the closure, just about $1,800. We're expecting pretty much zero for May. The governor made an announcement about reopening in June, so I think hopefully I'll have additional information on what June would look like at the next report. This is what we spent, 2019, compared to what we spent in 2020. The items in green are what projected. If you notice the difference between April, 75,000, the expenditure, and 38,000, that is because of the employees that were temporarily relieved, and the green numbers are what we are projecting based on the limited staff, and also we still be heating up the place and the minimal cost of keeping the building open. The same thing for Community Center. Last year, we did well based on their revenue for May, for April, more than 100,000; for May, 113,000; for June, 194,000. And for this year, the April, actually starting from the month of March, we almost actually, almost half of what we had last year. And now for April, pretty much very, about 10%, and expecting little or nothing in May and June, again, because of the new guideline that the governor released recently. So there will be some modification to June at the next presentation. Again, the same thing go for the expenditure for the month of April, May, June. So the 109 for the month of April, that is what we actually spent, and for the month of May and June, that is what we are projecting. Again, just as for Dumont, I think for the June spending and revenue, that will probably change as we open the facility up. For the Performing Heart Center, as I mentioned two weeks ago, they are getting, they are getting back to speed in getting their financial report to us, and that is part of why there's nothing in January, February, then you see small amount in March and a big amount in April. So I'm hoping that probably by June, their new finance director will be really up to speed and be able to get us caught up with most of their spending. So they have about three, they have three FTE plus one city staff that is working there, plus also the internal costs that we used to support them in there. So I'm hoping, you know, soon we'll be getting a timely report from them with their new finance director in place, and with the facility closed, she should be able to put a lot of attention in getting the report that we need to us. So the expenditure for them as well, because we catch up on most of their spending, you know, in April, and that is pretty much actually through February what we paid in April. So I'm hoping that there's some more bills that came in this month, so that will be revised later when we do May and June. So the impact of the three on General Fund, you know, looking at the original support that the General Fund was going to give to those three entities, the annual budget to support Dumont, you know, for 2020 is 23,000, and we've already transferred 23,000 to them. Federal Way Community Center, the annual support from General Fund is 312,000, and we've given that to them. For Performing Heart Center, the annual support is 800,000, and we've given them 471,000 out of that 800,000. So for the combined total, we have a balance of 328,000 to transfer to them before the end of the year. So based on that, as of the end of, the end of April, you know, Dumont, with a fund balance of 1.5 million, and hoping that the expenses for the May and June will be like that, and the same thing for Community Center. So I'm projecting that through the end of, the end of June, Dumont would need additional 113,000. Federal Way Community Center will need additional 390,000. And again, because we are opening partially in June, those number for the month of June will probably will change definitely. So through the end of June, our estimated additional support will be 500,000, a little bit of $500,000. That 500,000, if you were to compare that to what I shared with you two weeks ago, actually, I estimated 360,000. That was before we had more information on April, and we were able to estimate May more. So that figure changed from 360 to 504,000. That's about $140,000 difference for two months. Sales tax again, and that is why I've been, I'm really waiting for the end of this month to really see the true impact of this lockdown. I'm estimating about 950,000 for May and about 500,000 for June, but, you know, I think, just taking an educated guess, but I think the real number will come in towards the end of this month, and I think that will be an eye-opener. If we have the information in May, that will help us to be able to project June and maybe July as of now. That is just a wild guess that we're shooting. So with that, I'm looking at towards the end of, through the end of June, we're looking at that kind of about 970,000. Let me see. So, but with all of that, again, just a quick reminder of some of the things that make us sit in a better position than most of the other entities. As I mentioned earlier, we have 2.1 million from SCORE that we have not budgeted for. Yes, we're planning to use that for the salary study, but because of a pandemic, that is on hold. I think in working with Chief of Police, I've been, you know, very pleased, very receptive. I think with our current ADP, I think we'll be able to save about, you know, 0.38 million. But again, he did caution me that when we get out of a pandemic, possibly because of unemployment, there may be an increase in crime and possibly increase in people that we may have to lock up. But as of now, we're estimating about 0.38 million additional savings. Again, I want to make that clear that if we were with SCORE, even though with the lower ADP, because of the plan before, average of five years, we probably will not see this additional 0.38 million. So these are part of the decisions that you've made in the past that I think is coming about to pay off, and I really appreciate that. With pending Supreme Court case, we have about a million dollars, and that is an annual contribution that we are looking at. If we were to get a judgment, we will have an arrears for 2018 and 2019. You know, so I think, you know, that is also part of what is making us appear much better, even though the mayor and the council, you're all taking good steps in staff reduction and all of that. But again, we are not in a panic mode like most cities will be. Again, most of our also employees, that is part of why we're doing salary study. For those entities that are doing 10% salary reduction and all of that is because those employees are probably at that level. Our employees have been at the lower level for so long, and that is why we're doing the salary study. So at the next, my next presentation, I will cover sales tax, utility tax, motel/hotel, and again, the proprietary funds. I think we know that there's a likelihood our utility tax, you see a little bit of reduction, and sales tax, of course, we see a major reduction. Motel/hotel, because nobody is staying in these hotels, even though it does not affect the General Fund, but nonetheless, you know, that is additional money that is coming to the city that will go down a little bit, but it will not affect the General Fund. And I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? I see Councilmember Sepha Dawson has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ade. Curious about the projection for May and revenue, sales tax? It looks like we did okay in April, so why is the projection so low for May and June?
For May, I think that is, May will be the sales tax for the month of March. As I explained before, our, our collection is usually two months behind. Remember, the month that you pay the sales tax, the following month, the business files their report with the state, and the following month after they file that tax with the state, the state pays the city. That is why we're two months behind.
Okay, thank you. And with the utility, the pending case, do you know where that's at at all?
Well, the court, pretty much due to COVID-19, are pretty much suspended too. We were hoping that maybe by July or August, I'll let a city attorney speak to that if he has any insight to that.
Brian, any update?
No. So it's currently been argued already in front of the Supreme Court, so we're just waiting for their decision. Historically, that can take anywhere from four months all the way to a year. It's up to the court. They are working, so this probably isn't impacted by the COVID-19 because the hearings already happened, but we have no way of knowing when the decision will come out. So we have, I would guess, at least three or four months probably to wait, but it's speculation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Council President Honda.
Thank you. Thank you, Ade, for the report. So, Ade, do we know how many businesses in our city may not come back after this crisis is over?
As of now, no. We did a poll. There's some view that we were not able to reach, so which we assume they close. I think Tim and I, I saw reaching out to them, I think we probably have a very small number because we're not able to reach them, and we're thinking that they are closed. But as when the mayor, you know, decides on the funding, I think we probably will be able to reach out to a lot of them and be able to see who is still out there and who needs help. But as of now, we know there are probably about eight or 10 that we were not able to reach when we did a poll.
With the funding that we're getting from the state, the 2.9 million, do we know the rules for how that's to be spent? Have they tightened that up yet?
As of now, even though I've been in communication with the Department of Commerce, and I asked them specifically on one item, that is if we're able to use the money for some camera in the court. and I asked them specifically on one item, that is if we're able to use the money for some camera in the court and pretty much based on the response that they sent to us, uh that will, that will be fine. They are still working on coming up with the guidelines. When I talked to them before, about two weeks ago, they said between two and three weeks. So in my communication with them yesterday, I think they will probably be releasing it hopefully before the end of this week, we'll see.
Um and with the funding from the King County Council, I, is it about a hundred and fifty five thousand that we're going to be getting?
Uh regarding the funding from King County Council, I'm not familiar with that.
We don't know yet.
Oh, okay. So we don't know how that could be, we don't know the the final number or how it could be spent?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
And one, one last question is, I'm sure that um you guys all are working on the budget for next year. How do you, how do you make a budget facing this crisis when we don't know? You know, no, no one knows the future, but um how, how do you do that?
Uh I think uh part of what we will have to do, and that is why the information that will be coming in the next few months will be very critical. I think we probably have seen the lowest end. That is the total shutdown. That is the lowest end. From here on, there will be small revenue generation. I think the information that we will get in June, that will be the bottom. You know, because April was totally shut down, we will be able to use that information to project. And knowing forward that we will do better than that. And if we're able to able to support some of the businesses to remain in business, and most of the businesses that probably will suffer from this are restaurants. If we're able to maintain them, I think reasonably, the city will fare okay. I think some of the things that we have going for us again is we have not done, completed the salary study. So we have not increased our employee salary. So that will be of help. Uh the information that we will get will be able to help us to say, okay, uh you know, are we with this small amount of revenue with this reduction in staff? Will we be able to meet this? I think uh I was talking to John Hutton and he's on, on the line too. As we move into June and we gradually open up, how do, what, we need to come up with a plan on how do we bring the staff back? We cannot just hire everybody back because we won't have the service that is needed, that we need to be providing. So I think part of, and I've been talking with the mayor too, those are part of the things that he's planning on doing. I think by watching what we spend and gradually staffing up based on the need, based on the revenue affordability, I think that is the only way out. Uh the period that we are getting into will take a real balancing act because we don't really know what that is. In addition to this pandemic, it's also the gas. The oil price, that will affect the funding for our road through the fuel tax. So with less revenue from that, that will affect, you know, yeah, uh the money that we're able to spend on streets and all of that. But it will take a real balancing act and, you know, constant monitoring and constant ability to be able to make some tweaks, make some modification, you know. But uh yes, it will be really hard to predict in the long run, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tran. Councilmember. Just need to unmute, Councilmember Tran.
Mayor, he just dropped off the meeting. He could be having some wifi issues potentially.
I, I see him. I see, okay. Um, okay, so um Councilmember Copeng.
I I unmute it and then I get muted. Um. Thank you. Uh thank you, Mayor, and Ade, thank you for the presentation. Now, the uh the revenue that we have from sales tax, that is just our portion of the sales tax, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because I know there's substantially more taxes that are collected as part of the sales tax revenue device that we don't see, the majority of which goes to the school district, so.
Uh yes, actually, unfortunately, just like most of, both of the sales tax and property tax, unfortunately, the city is at a bottom of the totem pole in terms of the portion of the total of those, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then as far as, I thought, actually learned something tonight about the, I had forgotten that we had a two, two-month lag in reporting, so. But you're saying when you talk about May numbers, that's actually for March?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that makes sense, and now that certainly may help me to understand why in June, when we start to open up again, why you're projecting that number to be so low, because that's actually our April number, and we were shut down.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I think it will be interesting to know because just how those numbers do turn out, obviously from the standpoint of revenue, but I've observed a lot of traffic in Federal Way, so I know that we're uh we've got people that are out and about, uh you know, doing what they need to do, obviously, it's all essential, but this definitely noticed that there's a lot of, a lot of people out, so anyway, um thanks for the report.
I, I think uh for, for the city, even though I cannot really disclose how much tax that they pay and all of that, uh the businesses that are doing well are on the top ten of the highest sales tax payer to the city. You have Walmart, you have Home Depot, you have Costco. So I think those entities are still doing well. Uh that is part of why I feel reasonably, even though I'm nervous because I don't really know what the future holds, but knowing that those businesses are doing well again, uh I think the city will fare well. Uh some of the other cities rely a great deal on B and O. Which when you have businesses filing bankruptcy, not making any sale, those cities would be hurting. We don't have B and O. So and like I said, Walmart, Costco, Home Depot, those are businesses that pay the most sales tax to us, and those are the businesses that are doing really, really well.
Okay, uh thank you. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, Ade, for the information. Um I have a couple of questions. Number one, I read a couple of article regarding the um the survey that they did nationwide uh to see, you know, how this, you know, stay-at-home or shutdown uh impact those businesses. And uh most of the survey are saying that between twenty to thirty percent of the businesses will not come in back. So my question to you is what make us fair to way different uh from, from this number?
Yes, thank you.
Maybe that'd be a good, maybe that'd be a good question for uh for uh Tim, but Ade, do you have a stab at that first?
Uh yes, actually, I think uh and I've been going back and forth with uh team on this too. Uh nationally, they are looking at a lot of our businesses. Take, for example, you have a beef processing plant that closed. That is a lot of money. In the city of Federal Way, the makeup of the businesses that we have doesn't follow the national af- uh the national average. So yes, there will be some businesses that will not come back. You are talking about dry cleaning business, you are talking about maybe restaurant, you are talking about a barber shop, which as a city, we hate to lose any of those. But in terms of revenue to the city, most of those are not giving, paying the most to the city in terms of the sales tax. Yes, they are part of our community and we hate to lose them, but those are not the ones paying the most sales tax to the city. Tim?
Okay, can I ask another question?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Uh so I'm, I'm pretty sure you're aware, but um you know, once this stay-home order is lifted and people try to return to their, you know, uh normal life, whatever that is, do you think that people are going to, uh you know, go to um movies, restaurant and spend the money they, like they used to, or they are going to be more conservative? Uh they're not going to spend a lot uh simply because of the economy? Have we take into consideration when, when we um try to figure out the, the revenue, the tax uh we are going to collect in the future?
Uh actually, I serve on the board of a local credit union, and we had a board meeting today. They are seeing increase in savings. And they are seeing a lot of people taking advantage of mortgage payment delay. They've increased the amount of write-off. That is local business right here. So I'm more inclined to rely on that. Will people go back next month, go back to the way it was? I don't think so. But I think after a few months, when people felt that either by wearing masks or by doing, doing uh social distancing, they can reasonably go out and spend some money. I think it will go, it will gradually, it's not going to be flipping a switch. You know, it will go back gradually. But again, a lot of people are saving money now because they are worried about, are they going to lose their job? What will the future hold? And all of that. People are saving money. Our sales tax will not be, for this year, will not be even if we were to go back and everything opens up in July, it's not going to be the way it was net last year, no.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh Councilmember Moore.
Hey there, uh thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um Ade, I really appreciated your report, certainly a lot of insights and good tidbits to uh really just kind of understand. My question is, you know, th- through these challenging times and negative times, uh there is a little bit of glimmer of hope and positivity um in terms of how we're dealing with people's taxpayer dollars. Um is there any interest, and I hesitate in asking because I know everybody's time has been very sensitive, but i- is there any sort of interest in putting something together to educate the public in terms of, hey, like, here's what's happening with your dollars, here's how things look? Um, you know, um there is, uh there's some good out of this, you know? Um I don't know what your thought is on that.
Uh I think everybody is nervous, you know, and I work with the mayor and, you know, I think people are nervous, wondering, just like based on some of the questions that you as council member are asking, wanting to know what is the future uh looks like. So if you, council members are asking those questions, are wondering, I have the feeling a lot of our citizens are wondering, you know, what will happen to this, what will happen to that? And we do have a lot of good things happening to us that we need to be able to share with the citizens and share. You know, the conversation we're having now is part of it. But if there's some other ways that we can share the information with the citizens, I'll talk to the mayor and see what we can do, because I think we are not like Kent, we are not like renting. I think uh a lot of citizens would like to hear that or see that so that they are reassured based on some of the decisions that we're making that we're not, you know, having a fire sale yet.
Yeah, I, I just think there's just a lot of value in times like these to continue to be vigilant um and a thoughtful way of educating the public on their dollars, uh what's going on, how does it work during? Hey, you know, some cities are really reliant on B and O taxes, some cities are reliant of other tax measures, but let's, let's take a look at what Fed away uh is doing. I think there's just value in that. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, uh thank you. All right, now, uh thank you, Ade. Good questions. Uh now, moving on to the joint maintenance facility update, EJ Wallace, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, uh Council President. Uh I emailed you a status update earlier today. Um so largely, my report tonight's going to cover the same things. Um so in that email, there were the inspection reports that were compiled over the last two weeks. Um it's been a busy two weeks for us getting those pulled together, so in summary, uh what you saw um to share with the public is that we had the maintenance facility inspected by the city's building department, um which was inclusive of the building, building official as well as an electrical inspection, South King Fire and Rescue, and we also had a third-party outside inspector come in and go through the building. So there was an identified list of deficiencies, um and between the two reports, it's a, it's a very comprehensive detailed list. So what I did in the email was I summarized the, the key major items that were brought up um across all of the reports. And those included a lot of the things we talked about at the last council meeting. Um included the firewall requirements between the shop and the office area, included electrical items as well as within the equipment panels and the fire alarm system. It included the HVAC and ventilation system separation between the shop. Um and those are two separate topics, but obviously interrelated. There's a natural gas line on the roof that was identified. Uh the ceiling tiles in the office area as well as exposed insulation in the office area. Uh mold was found in the back, um actually in the cabinet itself, not, I'm, and I want to be clear, it's not on the cabinet, it's in the cabinet body um from leaking plumbing and multiple roof penetrations that were failing. So out of that list, um it's not all, not all negative bad news. Um there's two I areas that were identified as immediate risk to staff. Um and again, this is um what was identified in the, in the email earlier. And the good news is that we have temporarily abated both of the items that were uh risk to staff. So the first one is the firewall ventilation in um the shop. So both of those items are triggered specifically because of the operations that occur on the shop side of the building. Um and, and what that means in, in layman's terms is metal fabrication, so welding, torchwork, cutting, you know, cutting a metal. So specifically items that can generate flame. So obviously, we did not build a firewall in the last twenty-four hours, but what we did do is we instructed staff to stop all of those operations. Um and we, where we absolutely have to weld, um we will do it outdoors in the maintenance yard, um which is a safe-approved methodology. Um obviously, we can't do it when it's raining and, you know, there's a, there's a lot of practical implications, but it addresses the safety item. Um so that one is, like I said, that's a resolution on that one in the short term. The second one is the ceiling tiles in the office area. Um so we have removed the remaining ceiling tiles that were identified by the third-party inspector. And that was, that was partially done today, partially, the remainder of the cleanup will actually be done tomorrow morning. But they are all down as directed by that inspector. So we still need to go back ultimately and uh deal with now the more exposed insulation, um but that is not a life safety risk to staff. Um and that was very clearly identified by the, by the inspector as a, a needed maintenance item, but not a not an immediate safety risk to staff. but not a, not an immediate safety risk to staff. So with those two items addressed, at least on an interim basis, we have, like I, like I mentioned, we've addressed the safety concerns related to the preventing use of the building. So that takes care of the, the immediate. The bigger picture item is the repair of everything else and how we address everything else that I just covered, as well as all of the enumerated very specific things in the reports. So we are, we were obviously focused on the life safety items first. So now that we have them, we're turning to receiving pricing for repairs and trying to figure out how to separate out that work to make it the most efficient and least impactful way to staff to get that accomplished. So that is our next step in this process that we talked about with council last time. So as we get that additional information, we will share it with council. So that is the status of where we stand right now.
All right, council, any questions? Councilmember Berusso and then Council President Honda.
Thank you, Mayor. EJ, thanks for the report. So I was wondering, I read the report there. And so that building, is that annually inspected, number one, is the first question? Would you believe it is? The second thing is, Mayor, I don't know about this, but the tiles and the other, the style, the older, the age of that building, is there asbestos in that building?
So the third party inspector recommended asbestos testing for specific areas, specifically the floor tiles, specifically the paint on the exterior of the building, the one light fixture, and there were a couple other items. The ceiling tiles were not identified. And we, him and I personally did talk about that. So and he was, he was aware of, you know, it was his safety recommendation to get it down. So yes, we specifically talked about those. As to the annual inspection, it is inspected as a hot work by the fire department annually. That is a little bit different than what we do for this inspection now. I'm sure you're very well familiar with that. But for the, for the benefit of, for the rest of the council, so that inspection is specifically related to metal work. And they're not looking at the building as much as the operations and making sure we have fire extinguishers and making sure we have protective measures, more policy oriented protective measures in place to protect the operations. So for South King, it's actually a completely different person that does it. But, but yes, to your question.
Thank you, thank you, EJ.
Okay. Council President Honda.
Thank you, thank you, EJ, for sending us a report before the council meeting. I appreciate that. So the building is safe to stay in then? They did not recommend staff needing to leave?
With those two items addressed, that is correct. So those two items were specifically, and like I said, they were fine with the one being stop doing the work, that's an acceptable solution. But with those two items addressed, you are correct.
And do, do they think that the building will be safe to stay in for the next four years?
With the other work done. And that's what we need to look at is, it's a long list. So we need to make sure we have a complete picture of what is all included and make sure that makes sense. And that's what we're, we're looking at doing right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Copeng.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'd say I was really gratified by the conversation that we had last time with the concern that was expressed by the council regarding the safety and the work conditions of our staff there. I think that it's very clear that we need to, we need to move forward with getting the, the project, this project completed. And EJ definitely look forward to seeing a report from, from our consultant. I know that one of the concerns that was expressed was specifically the solution that you proposed. And I just, you know, I just, as one member of the council, I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to seeing all the options that we have available so we can make the best decision. I certainly think that it's important for us to recognize that one of the costs for this, this, this improvement to our city will be the land itself. And owning land is a tremendous, tremendous advantage for us in keeping the costs down. So again, I think it's good to know that we can use that facility. It's good to know that our employees are safe. But I think one of the things that the council definitely expressed some interest in is the welfare of our, of our employees in that facility. And knowing that we have the best working environment for them and that they are able to do their jobs effectively and we're able to grow. And that, that building is not going to serve our needs long term. So the sooner we can get out of it, the better. But at least we have the use of it for now, and that's great. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, now, moving on to, we had a virtual all city staff meeting on Thursday, May 7. It was a great opportunity to hear from the city employees. We had quite a number, I think we had almost 150 folks that were participating, you know, via Zoom and had an opportunity to recognize the folks who have done some good things. Plus, I'll let them know what we're up to and, and, you know, how we're navigating our way through this situation. So it was a very productive, very productive meeting. Last Wednesday, we had the Business Resiliency Task Force on May 13. That was Wednesday. I'd like to thank Tim Johnson, who helped get that facilitated off the ground, as well as Bill Vedino and Thomas and, and all of the staff that really helped that. We had, gosh, we had, you know, well over 40 businesses represented. And we, again, it was a Zoom meeting and we just talked, gave them an update on what we're doing and also, you know, different, you know, different assistance that's out there. And really, they're going to be asked to meet several more times and come up with strategies to assist other fellow businesses in our community. To make sure we don't have a situation like Councilmember Tran was talking about, where, you know, some communities are looking at a failure rate of, you know, a third of their businesses, a 30%. And, you know, that'd be catastrophic. And so we just, we don't want to see that. And we're doing everything that we can to help them. And then the very next day, we had, on Thursday, the 14th, we had the Community Continuity Task Force. And that was local service organizations, Fusion and the Multi Service Center and Boys and Girls Clubs, arts organizations and local hospitals. And it was a great opportunity to get, you know, those folks together via Zoom. Once again, we had more than 40 people on the line, I think almost 50. And, you know, we were talking about making sure that, you know, they can continue their missions and really just talked about the steps that we're taking right now. So those two, those two missions, those two task forces occurring one after the other, I think were very positive. I was on Como Radio yesterday morning talking about those. Our own Carleen Johnson from Como Radio, I heard about these and I was talking about them. So Tim, anything you'd like to add on that? Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Note to, to the council, eloquently done. I'll pass, thank you, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, council, any questions on that? Okay, so those were, those were positive. We're going to have the next meetings of those task forces on the first week in June or thereabouts, so then be on the watch out, on the lookout for that. We had the, the opening of the farmer's market on May 16, which was absolutely fantastic. And I thought they did a fantastic job. Rose and her entire team just did a great job. I saw council members, Copeng and Moore and Council President Honda. And Lydia, were you able to make it? That's right, okay. So Lydia there. And Greg, where, did I see you there?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't make it.
All right. Why, make a bad witness in court? I wouldn't be able to. I couldn't sort it either way, all right. That's a whole other matter, all right. So it was good. Is there anything to add on the, on the farmer's market? Any impressions?
So I volunteered there for about four and a half hours in the rain and cold. I was pretty cold when I was done. Next week, we hope to have more vendors. And what public health is allowing is two people per booth. So Saturday, we could have 22 people shopping. And we will continue following the public health rules and we'll have more booths and more, more things to purchase and look at. So just be sure and wear a mask when you come. That is a public health policy. And if you have to stand in line, be patient because it's worth it.
Yeah, I do want to say, yeah, I thought, I thought it was done very, very well in regard to spacing. And also, I really appreciated the King County Health folks that were there to make sure that we could do it. Mark Copeng was there, was there with his designer, snazzy, dark face mask. Any, any comments, Mark, about the market?
I tell you, it was good to, to be out and see you guys in, in the community again. I think, you know, the farmer's market certainly is a, a community asset. And the efforts that Rose, Dave and Carla put into that, along with their volunteers, is really just a real gift to our community. And I hope that the community can, can really participate in, in, in what is, it's a great treasure in our, it's just a great treasure. So glad to have it. And, you know, again, it's good to see, like Susan mentioned, she was a volunteer and there's a lot of volunteers, Shelley and Vipals were there. John Fairbanks, City Inspector or Manager in Edgewood, but longtime Federal Way resident was there as well. And he's a, he's an official, unofficial resident of Federal Way. So we're glad to have him too. But just, it's a good, it's a good start to see us come out of our hibernation. I guess that's a good way to put it. We have been hibernating here, forced to hibernate for a while. And that's good to see with the sun coming out that we get to, it's just, it feels, feels optimistic. It's kind of feels like spring and it's almost summer. But anyway, I'm just glad to be able to move on from where we were slowly, carefully. But let's move on.
Yeah, it was great. I really, it was a nice, it was a nice time. And the flowers were great. So, yeah, I went to the market with, you know, Wendy gave me a certain amount of money and I got the flowers and the caramel corn and the mask. And, and she, I walked in the door and she's like, do you have any money left over? And I'm like, no, I spent it all. So anyway, it was good. Okay, let's see here. So we have the farmer's market, Multi Service Center, our virtual auction. That is June 1 through 6. So we've got, normally every year, they have the crab feed. And this year, they're going to have to do it virtually. And so auction opens on Monday, June 1, and then it closes on June 6. And I think they're going to have a, an event on the 6th. That'll be, I think, let's see here, Saturday at, I think, June 6 in the evening, at 6:00 PM is when they're going to have, or 7:00 PM is when they have the event on Facebook. So I look forward to that. Okay, that is my report. Council committee reports. Actually, as, as council member Coach Moore is not present, we'll just pass over that right now. Land use, Councilmember Copeng.
Yeah, yeah, we had a, these meetings are remarkably short, it seems like. But we had a good discussion at the last land use and number of, all the items that we discussed have gone through to the consent agenda for tonight. Our next land use meeting is going to be June 1, 5 o'clock. And my guess is it will be virtual, but still hold out hope that we can get live again before too long.
Get live, okay, I like that, okay. Okay. Councilmember Tran for the Finance Economic Development Regional Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report out. Our next meeting is going to be at 5:00 PM on next Tuesday, May 26, probably on Zoom again. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sefad Dawson.
Yes, I would like to start by thanking Tim for his wealth of knowledge when it comes to what's happening in our city and as he's trying to work with other businesses and with our chamber of, with our chambers. So thank you, Tim. With that, we, we had updates from the, from all the hotels telling us what they're doing, how they're kind of working their way back to rehiring or bringing back some of their staff. We also, Tim also talked about the, gave us an update on the tourism study, update on the digital sign at 348th and also the, our application for the NCAA championship. And so what's, what we're doing with those championships for 21 through 23, 2021 through 2023, I believe, and Tim, correct me if that's wrong. And with that, our next meeting is June the 10th. Yes, I believe Wednesday, June 10 at 10:00 AM. And that concludes my report.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The pick meeting was a good one, it was interesting. We covered, we talked about the legislative session, what that could look like. There's potential talk about, obviously, a special session. I think all of us have heard that. And the Association of Washington Cities are working very closely with local governments to keep them up to date and for us to be prepared. As I think we're all aware of that, in just in case that they do go into special session. Secondly, we, I did take, there was a proclamation of committee, of commitment to an inclusive community that rejects stigma and bias related to COVID-19. So we voted to make an emergency proclamation of that and then to vote on the actual, whether or not we should make an emergency and then to vote an actual proclamation. I did vote in favor of that. And I know that Councilmember Libby Sefad Dawson is working on such an item for the near future, which I don't want to steal her thunder. But it was a very important proclamation, I think, for regionally as well. So we obviously got an update on the Regional Homeless Authority as well. And the, it was discussed, the phase two, the instructions and guidelines will, will, they'll begin to kind of come out relatively soon. And, I'm looking at the agenda to see if I'm missing something else. But other than that, those are some of the major highlights in this. I don't know if Councilmember Sefad Dawson, she attended, as well as Council President Honda. So hopefully, I'm not missing anything else. But those are some of the major items as well. So with that, next meeting of the pick meeting will be on Wednesday, June 10. And we don't know if it's going to be virtually in that virtual, but I would assume it probably will be. So with that, that will end my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Council President Honda.
Thank you. Well, I have exciting news. Our civic lessons, which has now been changed to Federal Way City Council, Lessons for Youth K through 8th grade are going online on our Facebook page. Every day, we're putting two council members' lessons online so that we don't overload them. And right now, we have three online. We have, so these were the items that our council members talked about. I talked about council, the purpose, role and goals of the council. Then we had a discussion on census, 2020, importance of voting, land use issues, the Public Issues Committee, which Councilmember Moore just discussed, and Federal Way history. So in the next couple of days, all of the lessons will be online on our Facebook page. And then we're hoping to get those on page 21, channel 21, excuse me. And I'm very excited, they all turned out really great. Y'all did a good job. And I'm excited for the public to see our hard work and what we thought was important to have our students understand. And I just encourage the public to continue to be involved, as you always are, and to attend our council committee meetings as well as the council meetings. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now moving on to citizen comment. Um, I think we've got one letter from Frank Fields. I'll have, uh, ask to be read at this time. Stephanie?
All right, Mayor. The letter starts, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. We are scheduled to start slowly opening the city again, May 31st, 2020. Last week I was talking with SHAG management regarding how much longer it will take to have sanitation state stations in place for the mail, mail areas and lobby areas because of the high volume of traffic such as postal workers, delivery services, visitors, et cetera. To my surprise, they had said they had to place orders two months ago and have no idea when it will arrive. Is this happening throughout our seniors communities? I'm aware of shortages on mask and PPE, PPE equipment, but why can't we have sanitation stations before the city opens up? Can someone find out why this is happening? And is this of concern when we have the stores and other businesses having nice sanitation stations, at least paper towel holders and sanitizing lotions? We're already not being tested as we should. Now we can't sanitize because of a shortage or backlog. The senior communities have been doing a lot of this on its own. It would be great if the city or state could at least make sure we get supplies or let us know why it takes two months for delivery orders." Michelle Gani is a management for SHAG in Federalway and provided, uh, her contact information. My name is Frank Fields, a concerned resident and disaster captain here at SHAG, and he provided his contact info as well. Thank you for your time, Frank Fields, a senior of Federalway."
Okay. All right. And do we have anybody on the line who would, uh, like to, uh, anyone on the line?
No, Mayor, we do.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, that concludes citizen comment. Now it's time for the, uh, consent agenda. These items have gone through, uh, council committees and can be, uh, passed in one motion. But I'll read, uh, through them and ask if a council member would want to pull an item for individual consideration. Item A, the minutes for the May 5th to 2020 regular meeting. B, citywide variable land use controls, a bid award. Item C, South 348th Street in Trent, Intrad Sign Bid Award. Item D, Pacific Highway South HOV lanes, Phase 5, South 340th Street to South 359th Street, final acceptance. Item E, modify the transportation systems capital improvement plan. F, 2020 pavement markings, citywide bid award. G, resolution setting a public hearing date for the 2021 to 2026 Transportation Improvement Plan, June 16, 2020. H, King County Flood Control District Flood Reduction Grant Application. I, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU between LTCA, LLC and the City of Federalway for the Pacific Highway Substation. J, Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU between Habitat for Humanity, Seattle, King County and the City of Federalway. Counsel, are there any items that, uh, you would want pulled for separate consideration? Okay, hearing nurn. Uh, Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of items A through J on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? The motion is to pass items A through J. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Uh, council reports. Let's start with Councilmember, um, let's see here. All right. Councilmember Moore.
Oh, surprise. I know. Living dangerously there, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, um, um, again, it's, it is certainly is interesting, uh, period of time. Uh, certainly everybody, uh, hears those words, uh, quite frequently. I, I did have, um, the opportunity to also attend the farmer's market. And that was, um, it was good, but I just knew that Rose has had a difficult time, challenging times. And so, um, I think she deserves, um, a word of thanks and appreciation for her to try to put some sort of normalcy, uh, back into the lives of, of Federalwayans and, and, uh, members, uh, regionally as well. Because it's not just Federalway people that visit, it's, uh, people from around the region that stop by our Federalway farmer market. Uh, the second item is, um, that, um, um, there is a citizen, uh, that's had, uh, some challenges in his neighborhood, uh, and just have, uh, there seems to be a, a guy who's rented and, uh, seems to have a lot of cars parked in the Twin Lakes area. And I mean, a lot of cars, uh, and just working, working, working away at it. So, uh, it's been a concern for a couple of years. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your work on that. Thank you for, um, directing your staff to, to try and resolve that problem. Um, I think today we've gotten closer to that. This has been a challenge for, for a long time. Uh, and so it's, I appreciate the sensitivity around that and, and, um, and I'm looking forward to continuing to, to monitor that and offer my support, uh, to, to, for our constituent, our constituents, uh, to get that issue resolved. So I, I just wanted to pass on my word of thanks for, uh, being, um, uh, resilient and, uh, uh, and acting quick and swiftly, uh, in resolving those matters. So, um, yeah. So that being said, um, uh, I think, let's see, I'm trying to think of, I think that's about it. So I will end my report. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Copeng. I opined, uh, significantly on the farmer's market. So I think that's, uh, that's suffice for my, uh, report for tonight. So thank you. Except for, Councilmember Copeng, I have used your line over and over and over. Tried to give good attribution. You guys remember the line, um, that I actually used it that day at the farmer's market too. But actually even during our task force meetings, I want to let, I want to give you some kudos here on the air. You, everybody that's listening and, uh, my colleagues here, uh, Councilmember Copeng said that during this time, we may not be, we may not all be in the same boat. Actually, Councilmember Copeng, why don't you say it again?
We may not all be in the same boat. We're definitely all in the same storm.
I love that line. I love that line. I think it captures the spirit. Um, and we are all in it together. But, but interestingly, we're experiencing it in different boats. Um, but we're, we're all in the storm together. And I, I want to let you know, I've been using that line. Love it. And, uh, you know what they, go ahead.
You've used it enough now. It's yours.
Well, you know what they say, good comedians borrow, great comedians steal. So, um, anyway.
Are you a great comedian?
You guys be the judge.
Maybe you are.
Oh, exactly. I, I think Wendy would, uh, would probably disagree. Okay. Uh, now we've got, um, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. It's hard for me to follow that act. Um, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Uh, Councilmember, um, Berusso.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just first of all, I didn't get a chance to watch the Zoom on a task force meeting, but I, but I also watched it on YouTube. So thank you. And I want, I want to thank you and staff for putting it together. Uh, you have impressive participants, members in there. I think they're really going to do some really good work. So thank you very much for that. Um, second of all, it is national law enforcement meeting. So I want to thank my brothers in blue, uh, for their work. Stay safe, keeping our residents and citizens of Federalway safe. And my last thing is, don't forget about our 2020 high school graduates and anyone else that's graduating in college, uh, this year. Um, it's, we all know that if we've had kids that've gone through school, excuse me, and they look forward to graduation, it's a big thing. And I had some cars coming through my neighborhood the other day. I'm like, what is that? And, uh, I realized, oh, that's right, they're graduating. So please, if you know anyone that's graduating and the families, thank them and, uh, congratulate them. It's a lot of hard work and, uh, hopefully, you know, uh, by next year it will be a lot better for their siblings. Um, but let's savor the moment. So that will end my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here, here. All right. Councilmember Asifad Dawson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for a great meeting. And, um, by the way, before I forget, the proclamation that Martin mentioned, um, Councilmember Berusso and I have been working on it together. So just wanted to, um, state that. Um, that said, um, I don't have a whole lot to say except, um, my girlfriends walked the, um, Justice for Ahmed Aubrey. Um, I, of course I wasn't able to walk, but I kind of went and watched them. And, um, I believe I've said this before, but any, anything like this where, um, uh, any person of color is harmed or killed, it hits home for me because I have three sons, black sons, who I always worry about and think about. So it's just unfortunate that, that these things continue to happen. And, um, um, it hits home for me. And I just want to, um, remind our city, our citizens, as well as our council members that, um, it is unfortunate that it still happens. But at the same time, the fact that it really is absolutely impactful for people who, um, who are people of color, especially African-American young men, um, to fear for their lives in this day and age. And for me to call and check on them on a regular basis, just to make sure they're safe, is really sad. So I just hope and pray that nothing like this happens in Federalway and that we're always on top of it and that we, um, you know, we are against racism and we're against any kind of, um, um, yeah, any kind of racist acts. Uh, but it's, at the same time, I just want to remind people to be intentional about their relationships, intentional about how they treat people and what they think. And, um, it, like I said, it just hits home for me. And I'm sure for all other mothers like me, um, and/or families like me who have to deal with this on a regular basis and are continuously reminded that this does happen and it's, it's still going on. So, um, thank you for the time and, um, I, yeah, that's it. So, sorry.
No, it's wise words. I thank you. I thank you, Lydia. I think that's, well, I think being mindful, I think is very important. And I think, uh, you know, uh, it's, it is, you know, to, to see these things happen, it's just very deserving. So thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So I do have some things to talk about. Uh, today I attended a skateboard meeting on Zoom, but it was more than skateboarded, included the other two transportation committees in King County. So every city was represented. Metro talked for quite a while today and they've had a 74% reduction in their ridership. And this is compared to the same time last year. Um, they are offering a pro, program now where if there are two or more folks going to an essential job, so essential workers, they can form a van pool. And in the past, it's been more, uh, more people have been required. So if anyone is interested in that, contact, uh, Metro. They're helping public health get folks to shelters and to, um, medical care. And they've talked about in the future, they were planning on having a 20% reduction in service anyway in 2021 due to some lack of money coming in. Uh, 10% of that would be in Seattle and 10% is in the rest of King County. Um, with COVID-19, it'll be quite a bit more than that. And they are working on trying to understand, uh, where the reductions will be and how that would affect people in King County. Uh, the Northwest Seaport Alliance spoke and at this point they're 24% down in the amount of product that is coming in through the seaport. And, uh, they are trying to plan for the future and trying to understand how trade will work with Asia in, in the future. The one thing that everyone mentioned was the increased amount of citizens riding their bicycles. And we were encouraged as cities to make sure that we have good bicycle safety in, in our cities. So far, I haven't heard of anyone getting injured riding their bikes, but it could be a, a new form of transportation for folks. And we do have some, some fairly good bicycle routes in Federalway. Uh, we've been working on that for a number of years. So I think we're pretty lucky about that. I also attended a, um, webinar today with the National Foundation of Women Legislators, as did, uh, Lydia. And it was a pharmaceutical group talking to us today. And they were talking about the vaccine and medications that they're working on. And what was really, uh, interesting was that instead of working separately, these pharmacy companies in our country are working together because they're trying to get medications out that would treat COVID-19, which they think the medication to treat the disease will be here before the vaccine. And, uh, they do say the vaccine will take about 18 to 24 months to get all the approvals and before it's able to be used. I will be, um, sending some information to Jerry Lynn to put on our Facebook page. They gave us information on some organizations that will provide free or reduced costs of medications, even if you have medical insurance. And we know that we have families that are hurting right now and every little bit hurts. Um, I also attended last week, uh, the King County Domestic Violence Task Force meeting. And, um, in the beginning, there was an increase in domestic violence phone calls for help. Now there's been a decrease. There's concern that the calls that are coming in are much more serious and that we know that there are people facing domestic violence, excuse me, that are not able to call. And they're texting, they're, um, they're reaching out in other ways. But if anyone knows someone who might need some help, please help them because this is a, a time where someone in that situation may not be able to leave their home because of our lockdown. AWC last week had a webinar on, uh, COVID-19 and how the cities in Washington State are faring and, and what they're doing. If you guys want to watch it, it is, um, we can get you the link. It was an hour and it was really quite interesting. They talked about the financial aspects as well as the social aspects. And, um, tomorrow I will be attending my first large city committee meeting for AWC. I'm pretty excited about doing that. I would encourage everyone to stay safe, to follow the public health guidelines. And public health strongly encourages people to use a face covering or a mask when you're out in public. And, um, please continue to support our local businesses. The more businesses that are here that, when this is over, the better we will be. And that's it. Um, it's a short meeting, but we've got a lot done.
Okay. All right. Uh, that concludes, completes our, our agenda. Um, so thank you, uh, everybody. Thank you, staff. And I hope you have a, uh, a safe and happy, uh, week. And, uh, we'll see you at the first meeting in June. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.